I'm gonna ask you, make sure you speak up.
Right.
A lot of ambient noise in the background and your voice just doesn't carry very well.
Alright, well, that's...I can do that. My entire family will attest to that. Alright, so let's call a meeting to order at 6:00 PM.
Vice President Palmer?
Here.
Director Fayram?
Here.
Director Parks?
Yeah.
Remoely, Director Nelson?
Here.
And I'll note for the minutes that President Kennedy has asked.
Okay, would definitely stand and join me in the pledge, please.
I plead the plea to the citizens of the United States of America and consider any public who wants to expand, ownership, under God, to liberate any others.
Alright. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address the board on an item that isn't on tonight's agenda? On tonight's agenda, we'll have our twenty. No one in the audience? Is there anyone online?
No hands raised.
Okay. Alright, then hearing done, we will move on to the general managers' brief district status report.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm gonna just hold all comments till later. We're gonna go through my priorities. We're gonna talk about the big things that are on my plate, so there's nothing really of your part.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to administrative action items and consent agenda.
If I may, real quick, the finance subcommittee did not meet, but President Kennedy did station your review of invoices and would recommend them. And I don't know if Director Nelson, who's the other member of that, reviewed them or not.
I can hear you and I did review them.
Alright, thank you. Alright, then we'll entertain a motion to public comment on the consent agenda. Anyone on the line? Okay, entertain a motion, please.
To make a motion, approve the consent agenda.
Sure.
Alright. It's a roll call, right?
Correct. So I have a motion by Director Parks, second by Director Fayram. And it is a roll call. Director Parks?
Aye.
Director, uh, sorry, Fayram?
Aye.
Remoely, Director Nelson?
Aye.
Vice President Palmer?
Aye.
Okay, I think I got them.
Okay, then we'll move on to item seven, consideration of the ninety percent design proposals from Wallace Group in hydro science.
Alright, that's enough.
Alright.
Just run it past me. Clearly. Alright, there we go. Okay, so ninety percent design RFP. Got everything in front of me here, sorry. The RFP was released June 25th. Responses were due August 1st. We had six responses. I went through this last month. Six respondents are shown here. The technical subcommittee met a couple of times and narrowed it down to two. Two of the proposers, Hydroscience and Wallace Group. There was a lot of back and forth about what the order is. I just listed them alphabetically, so don't assume that Hydroscience is number one and Wallace Group is number two. They were both narrowed down to that. The subcommittee asked me to do reference checks. I did perform reference checks on both companies. In many cases, I asked the reference for one if they knew the other. You know, so if I'm on the reference call for Hydroscience today, you know anything about Wallace Group? And, you know, these are two companies that often work together on projects. So, yeah, a lot of the references knew both of them. And even the unsolicited references were all positive for both of them. So that, as Director Fayram predicted, the reference checks just confirmed that we've got two solid proposers that could do the work for us, no question. Interesting, both proposers did offer, as references, some sort of either a new, kind of like what we're doing, meaning a new set of septic tank to collection system to some other centralized community plant, like we're talking about with Solving. For instance, Franklin Hood is doing kind of a similar thing up near Sacramento. They're connecting to Hell Row. Couple of them were talking about, oh, we have two plants today. We're consolidating for a single plant. So, pointing this is just that the references were mostly in our bailiwick, meaning kinds of projects like we're proposing to do, including infrastructure, collection, so on and so forth. Couple of them were talking about why, for instance, they're doing those consolidations, which is just interesting to me, and I'll pass it along here. And that is, they were saying that, you know, pretty much every time they go to renew their license for their treatment facility, the water board, regardless of what region you're in, there are different regions, many cases than us, lowers some standard, meaning makes it tighter, which is essentially what Solving is going through right now, right? They had a fully functional plant. The water board said, hey, you've got some additional requirements. We want you to meet now. And all of them were of the opinion that, yeah, you know, if you guys are thinking about going to Solving, that's not a bad idea, because just know that implement your own treatment plan, the requirements for it will change over time. Pretty much every time you go back to get your license deal, you'll see that. So, my point in that is just to say, I was hearing good general advice for us, but also getting solid reference checks. Current status of where the subcommittee is with the RFP. There were some other commitments that members of the subcommittee had. For instance, Mr. Pike isn't here this evening. He got another family commitment, couldn't make it tonight. So, you don't have a recommendation in front of you between the two companies, just that those were the top two from the subcommittee. And in a minute here, I'll stop and you can hear from the two members on that subcommittee. So, as you'll see in the packet, I included both of the proposals from the two, the two responses we're talking about. The one from Hydroscience and the one from Wallace Group. If you want to go through them in detail, they're there. So, wow. This is kind of my summary of what I think I heard from the subcommittee, as well as what was talked about with myself and General, or just to get your Pike. Hydroscience, clearly from the get-go, understood what we were looking for, that we were much more focused on, first of all, get us to ninety percent. But we've got a financial constraint. And so, we won't include in our proposal a lot of the other pieces. And I'll get to what those other pieces might be in just a minute. Their response is clearly sufficient to get us to a cost comparison between effluent or gravity or some mix of the two. And this third bullet here, I'll talk about with Wallace Group. There will be additional work to get us, if we went with the Hydroscience approach, to get us to bidable documents, being what you would call a fully baked ninety percent design with all of the bits and pieces that you would need to do in order to do that. In the case of Wallace Group, they actually included all of those bits and pieces. We had said to the proposers, look, you often talk about these things in the terms of plans, specs, and estimates. We told them, you know, don't focus on specifications or trying to produce, you know, two hundred spec sheets. Instead, focus on the plan part of it and giving us solid estimates based on those plans. Wallace Group did propose what's probably over $750,000 of costs that the district will eventually have to expend for things like surveying, things like the geotechnical, what is the soil really like? Looking at the laterals that are going to come from each and every parcel in the district, doing what's known as potholing, meaning you punch a bunch of holes in the ground to make sure of things like utilities are where people say they are. So, all of that was included in the Wallace Group's estimate and proposal. Hydroscience didn't say it wasn't needed. They just didn't include theirs, because they knew what we're focused on. Get us to a ninety percent plan and give us estimates for our cost for construction and ongoing O and L. Subsequently, we, the subcommittee, met with both these folks. I had additional conversation with Wallace Group. And they said, you know, if you're looking for a simplified proposal more along the lines of what you've got from Hydroscience, and they sent me something, so I have that as well. So, what I would say to you, your board and the public, is, okay, so what really is your goal here? Alright, think about that as we go through this deliberation and you guys discuss this. If your goal is to select and get to a collection approach in the community based on, instead of, you know, STANTEC work and REGEN work, which were two different levels done by two different organizations using two different methodologies, instead, using one organization, same methodology, solid review of the work that's been done, I think that either of the organizations, Hydroscience or Wallace Group, can get you there, without question, within our budget, based on the revised Wallace Group supplement. If your goal, on the other hand, is to be ready to put documents out to bid at a true ninety percent, with full plan specs and estimates, the Wallace Group clearly is closer to that, but it's outside of what we budgeted for. So, you gotta think through that, right? And then I would remind you that the closer you are to final design, you know, we're at, you know, somewhere less than fifty percent with the STANTEC work, even less than that with the REGEN work. This is attempting to get us to basically ninety percent from a plan perspective. The closer you get to final design, right, the better off your estimates are gonna be, right? And I think we all knew that. With anything we're doing, you know, the closer you get to final, the more you know what it's gonna cost. So, the further away you are from final estimates, there's gonna be a little more variability. I'm not saying that you couldn't go to a 218 with the work that is being proposed by these two, based on what we've been talking about. We had talked way back when about going with what STANTEC had provided, what they called thirty percent. And this will be a higher level than that. It'll be sufficient to get you through an assessment engineer's effort, all of that sort of thing. So, the public can say, oh, that's my parcel. That's what I would be paying. And we'll talk more about that with the next item. But it'll get you much closer to that, okay? So, think about what it is you're trying to discuss. Make sure you're all on the same page as to where you're trying to get to. Because I don't want to just make an assumption and tell you which one of those I think it is. As far as deliberations and thoughts are concerned, within the RFP, these criteria that are on the slide here are what we said we would use. Readiness and ability to meet requirements, the RFP was thirty percent. Expertise in the project area and on similar project, twenty-five percent. Cost, I've got an asterisk there, was twenty percent. Qualifications of individuals performing work, fifteen percent, and the project timeline is ten percent. Where we're at right now with the revised Wallace Group, I think you pretty aren't close in all five of these categories. So, you're not, you know, it's gonna come down to where you want to be, where you want to go, and talking to the two members of the subcommittee that were part in the discussion. So, what I'd suggest to you, Madam Chair, is take questions to me from the board, go to public comments. I think some of the proposers are online. Even give them their three minutes if they wanted, hear from the public, and then come back and fully deliberate. What I'm looking for tonight, presumably, is direction from the board to go negotiate with one of these two vendors. That would be my ideal situation, and that would allow me to come back in October with an actual contract. If our goal is still to make a proposition to eighteen late next year, you know, we can't keep taking the road, we jammed down the road too far. We've gotta get moving on this stuff. So, with that, I'll stop. Big questions, so on.
Sounds good. Do you have?
Good summary.
Okay. Do you have questions?
I do. Yeah, I just, you know, one of my big concerns was talking to all of these companies was the fact that they have no real documented effluent experience in residential system. And I know that you were gonna talk to them about that, so, yeah, I think when we were reviewing all these, it was quite evident that the four main ones around California all were very experienced at doing gravity sewer, lift bases, and stuff like that. But they didn't have any demonstrable experience in doing effluent. I mean, they've done some small tanks with grinder pumps and stuff like that. So, I thought, you know, I kind of directed you, okay, can you see? Well, I'm saying, oh, we've done some effluent, but only commercials, you know, only commercial designs. So, I mean, when we had the meeting before, you know, the technical committee, you know, my concern, which I wasn't shy about, was just, okay, yes, REGEN, most engineers and you guys don't like it, because they haven't done any work in California. And I understand that. But the ones that are here haven't really done, at least, at least they haven't documented or they haven't shown us where they have done effluent and have experience in that, so they can give us valid quotes. So, and that's where my big concern is, then, is like, okay, so we have someone that's from out of California that has a vast amount of experience in effluent and quite less experience in gravity. But then we have all these other gravity that have tons of experience. I think they're all very qualified. And it's just kind of bridging that gap if we're doing this to try to get a good cost comparison. Yeah, I'm just a little bit discouraged. And so, I don't know if you can inform me of how your discussions went with them as far as getting more information on their experience with effluent, so they can actually show us, they can do the bidding, so we have a true comparison for everybody to look at.
Yeah, so, let's, for those who aren't familiar with the conversation as anyone else. So, effluent's an interesting conversation, right? And you threw in some terms that I'm sure a lot of the public and maybe even board members aren't entirely familiar with. So, we have spent a lot of time talking about step systems, right? Which is step, septic tank, effluent pumping. So, you have a tank on your property. Stuff comes out of your house, or your business goes into a tank. It settles there, right? And under pressure, you pump just the liquid off to be treated and then disposed of, alright? So, that's one way to describe this. That's one of many types of effluent systems. Importantly, in that conversation, I think we're going, is that liquid-only stuff that gets pumped out somewhere else is under high pressure or higher pressure, right? Another technology which you described, and by the way, both vendors did say they had, to your point, some experience with step-like systems, but, you know, just not done a whole lot. Both of them had extensive experience with what is often referred to as low-pressure effluent systems. So, what is a low-pressure effluent system? Instead of going into a tank and settling and pushing off just the liquid, often, it's a technology or description is a pump, or grinder pump system, meaning everything comes out of the house, it gets ground up, mixed up like a slurry, and all of it gets pushed on under pressure, just not maybe as high a pressure for treatment. So, everything goes to treatment. So, both of them have experience with that. It's so, they don't have as much, you know, they don't have as much experience with step. But both of them did say, yeah, we've been exposed to step projects in the past. So, to your point, yeah, neither of them said, oh, yeah, let's do a Los Lejos-type-sized community on step. So, that's correct. I can't say that, you know, both of them were able to speak, in my opinion, and all the words and just to get your Pike's amount sufficiently about step to know that, yeah, they know how to do pressurized pipe. Both of them did talk about using force mains. And the force main is just kind of the other end of that, right? It's a pipe with liquid that you're putting under higher pressures setting on down the line. So, I understand your concern. And, yeah, they haven't done community our size with step, but they've done all these other actions.
Have they done any step?
Yeah.
They have.
Yeah, I believe they've done that.
Because, I know, one, yeah, I mean, they talked about, you know, the Franklin Hood project. Yeah, it was all the grinders, smaller tanks, the grinder pumps and all that. And it was quite a bit more expensive. So, I know, it just seemed like in their reports, they were somewhat biased against that, because it was so much more expensive. And then it just, which didn't really correlate to what we've seen with comparing the STANTEC and REGEN though. So, and I, and just, yeah, I guess I'm just still not really sure which way to go. And I think REGEN's done a good job with doing the step proposals for us or the effluent proposal for us. But then, I know that, yeah, I mean, there's concern that they haven't done projects in California. And I guess until they get a project from California, they never will have a project from California to go on. I guess I would like to maybe speak with Wallace and Hydroscience a little bit more to see if there is an inherent bias against this. So, I just don't, I just wanna make sure that we have apples to apples for everybody to compare, so we don't just go down the road to a gravity sewer like everybody thought we were gonna do in the very beginning. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just, just to speak to that, you know, when we did, we're kind of beyond the point. We have, the subcommittee has brought two firms. That's the process that we did. It is a qualifications-based assessment. And the two that we brought are highly qualified in doing this type of work and have done a lot of work in California. I don't want to rehash all the discussion at the technical committee, but when you just look at some of the firms we have in front of us, one of the folks, I'll just say on Wallace, is the district engineer for Los Osos. That's what they do. And we are, we are bound by law to pick the most qualified. So, we've done that, and we have the most qualified. And I don't think that the technical aspects of the effluent are such that REGEN's the only one that can do it. I don't, I don't have that, the same concern. I appreciate Director Parks' concern, but I would just say, we've done the process. We have selected two firms that are highly qualified, and that's where we are. And I don't see how, I can ask counsel, if we made a selection on the most qualified and we go back and do something different, I don't know how that works. And then we can have a real discussion about the qualifications again, if we want to go there.
Alright, thank you. I do have a question, Guy, on the timeline. I have a question on the timeline between the two, because the Wallace seems much more extended than the hydro. And, you know, that, it was going into 2027. So, that seems, from a design standpoint, beyond where we want to be. And I don't know, so that's observation one. And the second is, two, how bidable does it need to be? In my mind, we need to get to a level of accuracy, hard at our vote. I don't know that that's safe as putting out construction documents to bid. So, I need help discerning what, what, how much engineering do we need to do in order to have a confidence level in the estimates that we're gonna be putting before voters? So, it's gonna be work we have to do after. It's like, okay, it's a go, and then there's additional work.
So, let me, let me take those points back. So, about the timeline, clearly, if Wallace Group isn't doing potholing and surveying and looking at every parcel to exactly figure out where the effluent leaves a home, you know, so they can get that level of detail, it'll be a much shorter timeline to get to. Here's the base plan, here's the cost estimate. Do your comparison, decide whether you want effluent, step, wind systems, gravity, or some mix. That's a much shorter timeline, because all that surveying, potholing, all that's a big, big lot. Part of the reason it costs, what it costs, right, is it's a time and person intensive activity. So, I can look in just a second when I stop talking. I think they updated their timeline when they sent me the other piece. But I know for conversation, it's a shorter time, so it's not.
It's short enough to get us to a 218.
Hold on just a second. I'll pause for a second here and take a look. So, while I'm doing that, why don't I, why don't I speak to the estimate quality and such? So, you asked about the estimate. Again, the closer you can get to a final design, the more accurate it's gonna be. Do I think, based on conversation with District Committee or Pike, that what we would get from either of these is sufficient to do all the assessment engineering and get us toward a 218? Yes, I do. I know Director Fayram would like to see the closer to final docs. Getting to bidable documents is just kind of another point in there. It's not the same as, oh, you have to get to bidable documents to do assessment engineer or go to a sweep. But, so, it's a, it's a comfort kind of a level thing, right? So, you, the four of you, with, I'm pointing at Director Nelson online here as well, will have to, since you're here in the room, kind of come up with how comfortable are you with, with that? Like, I can give you information, but, you know, you and the public have to decide whether or not that's sufficient. I thought that they included a timeline. They didn't, although I know that a representative from Wallace Group is online during public comment, when asked a specific question, I'm sure she'd be prepared to answer.
That'd be great, if they could answer it during comments. That'd be appreciated. Alright, Director Nelson, do you have any questions or?
Actually, just the same comments, Director Parks. I concur with a lot of what he said. And the other concern I have is, since our, our options are looking at either all gravity, all effluent, or a hybrid of both, it's pretty important that whoever we're having to do this is familiar and qualified to do either or both. And, and I don't know, as Director Parks pointed out, if the others don't really have any experience in that, I don't know if that makes them qualified or not qualified. I'm, I'm really not sure. I'm basically asking that question. Is there, I mean, I know they're gonna do similar things. They're gonna lay trenches, and they're gonna lay down pipe, and they're gonna do some things. I don't know how specific they need to be on knowing how to do effluent versus gravity or a combination of both. So, that's where I'm sitting in it. And, and so, I'm kind of halfway between Director Fayram and Director Parks, because I want to know if they can do either one or both. And that's my biggest concern right there. So, that's all I have.
Madam Chair, if I may, real quick, just, by the way, I have a little thirty-second history lesson. I think it was mentioned by Director Fayram. I'm not sure. Wallace Group was involved with Los Osos. And I can tell you that the individuals from Wallace Group, Rock Miller in particular, one of their principal engineers, was part of that discussion. And I will tell you that Los Osos looked at, in detail, kind of funny enough, with not Tristan Bound, but Terry Bound, his father, back in the day. They looked at step. his father, back in the day, they looked at STEP in depth in Los Osos. And Rob Miller, one of the Wallace Group folks, was the engineer or one of the engineers on the project at the time. So that's at least one of his experiences with that. So it's not a no experience kind of thing.
You know, with Wallace Group's kind of amended timeline, which we aren't sure what there is, but also not getting all the way to a full 90% of documents, everything, did they give you a different quote for what it would be in 50% of the original?
So to get to the comparison.
So we can really compare Hydroscience with Wallace?
The costs are comparable. They're both within our budget and they're comparable.
Before, we had no budget for so far in the talk.
We did. We set aside in the budget, we set aside funds, and then your board kind of furiously amended that by adding additional when we talked about two potential solutions. So, but they're both within that one.
Okay. Any other questions from the board for Mr. Savage? Okay, otherwise we'll go ahead and move to public comment.
I think our attorney has a comment.
He does.
Nope. That's someone else with a law office title. That's not our attorney.
I think it's Ms. Ford.
Okay, my mistake.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, board members. So I just want to remind everyone that Polo is actually having Regent do the study that they wanted you guys to look at a year ago. And that one's going to be coming out soon. So before you guys make a final decision on anything, I think you need to wait for that study to come out and for the public to actually have time to look at what those costs are versus what the estimated costs are from all of the work that you guys are doing right now. My take on it is that it's going to cost less and it's going to be easier for the community to digest. And if they find that you guys are pushing through all of these studies in advance and you're going to go outlay some money on it and then find out, oh, we're going to have to spend more money because now we need to go back and re-study what Regent has just proposed via Polo, I think that you guys are just going to make everyone really upset. You're going to be accused of mismanaging money and mismanaging time. And you are going to have a lot of really angry residents and property owners. So I think you just need to take a step back and just contemplate that for a little while before you guys continue down this road. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles, your hand.
Thank you. First of all, you're talking in reference to saying that Wallace Group has worked on Los Osos' gravity system. That system serves 14,000 residents and we're talking about 372 parcels here. So there's a big difference. Let's see. Also, the general manager put out an RFP and requested quotes from these four firms. Yet, the general manager has not provided the quotes to the board or to the public. I attended the technical committee. There was only two members of the public at this technical committee meeting. And yet a slide showed up and it was just an Excel spreadsheet. It wasn't even an official quote from the companies, the engineering companies. And I don't know why the general manager says that he's in possession of them, but he hasn't obviously shared them with you. So how are you, you're going to put a roof on your house and you're looking at two qualified roofers. Don't you want to see the quotes? Nobody's asking for the quotes. And so I think that's a problem here. This is the public agency. This is the public's money. And just so you know, I'm going to share on that matrix, that self-spreadsheet, Wallace, their quote was almost $2 million. That's a $2 million study that all the taxpayers are going to pay for to study this 50 to 60 million dollar project. And part of the surveys are going to be for some of these properties. They're so low under the ground level that they're going to have to have pump stations on their property to connect the lateral to sewer pipelines on the streets. I don't think a lot of people understand whose property is not going to be sufficient enough. It's going to need a looser pump, and that, or miner pump, I guess that may be what it's called. And that's going to require electricity. So, and then I just, the Wallace is $2 million and the Hydroscience was $299,000 for their quote. So there's a huge difference between the quotes. Mr. Faram's pushing for the expensive one. Hydroscience, obviously, there's this, we're not comparing apples to apples here. So I think there's still needs to be an investigation here. And we need to have more forthcoming information from the general manager. I don't know why he doesn't share this in the board packet with the board members or the public. Thank you.
I can address that chair if you'd like.
Please. No, that's, this will public comment.
It's a few, probably from counsel.
He's not a member, he's not a board member.
He's our council. Well, let's, Mark, if you can hold. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
It's really simple, and it may just move that issue off the table. The law requires that when we consider professional contracts or professional middles, cost is not a consideration. That's under government code. You need to pick the most qualified, the most, the best match to somebody who will do the best job for you. After you've made that decision, then you move on to negotiate the contract price. If you're unable to do so, you move on to the next company that you were considering. But price cannot be a consideration in selection of a professional consultant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other member of the public in the room wishing to address the board on this matter? Is there anyone online?
We've got two online. One's just listed, Law Offices, KLR. I'm assuming that's Catherine Rohr. I'm not sure.
Catherine Lomeyer Rohr, right. Sorry, it's my work Zoom. So I want to, I'm glad council's online. I wanted to try to quickly address several things that have come up. First is a general manager's comment that these low flow or low gravity or whatever the heck they are sewers are somehow comparable to STEP is patently untrue. So let's not go there. Number two, you adopted a project description in which you said you were going to pursue both STEP and gravity. And so if you're now wanting to take STEP out of the equation, you need a new project description. Otherwise, you are right where Director Parks said you were. And Director Faram discounting Director Parks is incredibly disingenuous. I was at the technical committee meeting. Director Parks raised precisely these concerns. And he was pushed aside and told that he didn't understand the process sufficiently. And Faram and Savage took over the process and did not give regard to his concerns when they were raised there. So he's not raising this out of the blue sky. Interestingly, for whatever reason, that meeting was not recorded. We were on Zoom. Director Pike had us on Zoom, or, you know, Engineer Pike had the Zoom all set up. Everybody appeared via Zoom. No one answered or explained why they elected not to record that because that's been the policy for all of these committees. You have not voted to stop having those meetings via Zoom and record them. Fortunately, I recorded all of the presentations on my phone. I'd like to speak to Wallace Group and what is perhaps a bias for gravity, which might explain why Director Faram is so interested in having them on the job. And finally, I'll just back up what Michelle said. Los Osos is the furthest thing from a comp that we could possibly be looking at unless you're looking at like Los Angeles municipal system. So let's not pretend that that's the same geography, the same size. It's a completely different project. And you guys need to either honor your project description or come up with a new one. But stop playing games.
Thank you, Ms. Rohr. Is there anyone else online?
Yeah, I think we've got a representative from Wallace Group with her hand up.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon. Hi, this is Carrie Wagner with Wallace Group. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the board. As your general manager, Mr. Savage, introduced me as a principal with Wallace Group and the proposed project manager for the project. And just talking about a couple of the concerns that you've raised is, first of all, in terms of our experience for STEP system, one, we come with no bias on which system is the preferred alternative. We, as an engineering firm, will take a look at the properties and their topography. We will identify the concerns and the constraints that are proposed on both, for both options and provide a design that is comparable to where we can prepare a cost estimate that is comparing both apples to apples, same level of detail, same concerns, constraints, waterline crossings and utility crossings and so forth, and be able to provide your board with a project cost estimate for both projects as well as we have proposed to provide you with a life cycle cost analysis for both systems that will help, it's a 20-year life cycle analysis that will look at long-term operations and maintenance for both. That is what we've proposed. In terms of our qualifications, we do have experience in STEP systems. There's not many residential systems in this area that do STEP systems, but there are quite a few commercial systems. And a STEP system is a STEP system. It contains the same kind of infrastructure as taking all the effluent to a consolidated location and then pumping the effluent into a collection system. And so the design systems is, we do have quite a bit of experience on that commercial side as well as we have extensive experience on the gravity system. We do also, we participated in all of the discussions that were regarding Los Osos for the STEP system versus a gravity system. Yes, the magnitude of size is significantly different, but they are still considering same issues with long-term operations and maintenance and so forth for both systems. Lastly, in terms of the schedule, I did not provide General Manager Savage the updated schedule, but you can look at it if you want to compare apples to apples to what Hydroscience prepared. Is that if you look at the schedule proposed for just the 30% design, which is the basis, that we would be able to get you to a comparable analysis of both systems. And I believe it was, I do not have the schedule in front of me and I apologize, and I'm not at my computer. But I believe it was four to six months would be able to get you an answer for the schedule for that 30% design. Subsequent to that would be getting the design from 30 to 60 and then to 90%. 90% being a fairly bidable project, something that you would almost be capable of taking out to the public or to the contractors to bid. We would only have some minor follow-up at that point, plus preparation of the specifications subsequent to the 90% as the district had requested in the RFP. So hopefully I've answered several questions that you guys have brought up. And I'm happy to answer any further questions if you have any.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie.
So Carrie, you said the 30% date is, would be comparable to what you believe Hydroscience has proposed?
Yes, I believe that.
It'd be March 3rd, which is opposed to, yeah, like January 26th for Hydroscience. We must be on time.
So March 1st to January?
It's March 3rd, the 30%.
For 90% plans and cost estimate, though?
Yes.
Is opposed to 30?
Correct. There's, I think, their 30 is comparable to their 90.
Okay. Any other public comment online?
No.
All right. We'll bring it back to the board then. So we've got the two proposals. We need to make a decision if we want to give direction to General Manager Savage to move forward with one of them, or we need to decide what additional steps we need to take in order to come to a recommendation.
I think we go back. Well, first of all, I don't want to, we have other work to do before we get to the 218 as well. We've got environmental, we got assessment work. And so, you know, as for the concern about describing next fall's, you know, 218, I don't know how that's going to affect it. I wouldn't let that drive the process. We need to get a good product to get to that point. I just point that, you know, we did make the decision in June to move forward down this path. And as was noticed, the discussion of effluent and gravity are, will be in it. So it's not being discounted. But I want to go back to what council said is the process of selecting a consultant to do this work is just prescribed, and we've done that. And we're here now to make that decision. If we were going to go back and start talking about other firms, I would seek council's advice because we followed the process and we've got two highly qualified firms to move forward with this work, and that's what we should do. That's my recommendation. And I would just also say, in regards to not taking this move and making everyone upset, we had a lot of members of the public here in workshops, you know, wanting us to move forward. We've had testimony here in our board meetings as well. And so that would be extremely, I think, forward to not consider the many members of the public who want us to move forward and ignore that. So I'm hoping we can move forward, we can talk about between the two firms. They basically came in, Mr. Savage has brought them in following the process. And we should select what we want to do and direct Mr. Savage to move forward with that.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Any comments or?
Nope. No, I'm satisfied with what I've heard in the comments.
Yeah, I think we have a fair amount of information. I don't think, at least for me, not enough clarity to really pick one because, I mean, really going through that, as I guess, I think there was at least some inherent bias. I just would like a little more clarity from there. And the fact, too, that Polo has contracted with Regent to have some other options in there, too. This is the big step first, a lot of money we're spending. I mean, I would like, I mean, I would recommend putting off, making the final decision till the next board meeting, that we have more time to truly get down to it. And I know we want to pick the most qualified. And, yeah, I mean, I think these are all very, very qualified for gravity sewer. But I still am not convinced that we're going to get a, I'm not sure, I'm just not convinced. I'm not saying that we won't. I'm just not having the ability to convince me that we want to get an apples-to-apples harrison that is going to be fair to the public. That's just my comment.
You could say the same likewise, too. I don't believe other firms have had the experience with gravity. They've done effluent systems in Idaho and Florida for private developments and not public agencies. And the two firms in front of us, what they do for public agencies in California. And you can't discount the importance of the complications of contracting, plans and specifications. You need the right firm to do the work regardless of what it is. And I think that if, talk about. And I think that if, talk about, you know, the Polo contracts, President, we made this decision in June, and it was unanimous, that we were going to go down this path. Mr. Savage was directed, put out proposals, we received the proposals, we reviewed them, we went to the technical committee. If we're going to say we're going to wait for Polo, with all due respect to them, I appreciate, I think their heart's in the right spot, you might have another entity that says, "Well, wait a minute, look at this." And then another individual say, "Well, wait a minute, you know, look at this." We can't do that. We've made a decision with public input and have had workshops, and if we don't follow that path, I just think that's not the right way to go. And I again go back to the process of selecting the consultant. We've done the process, and here we are.
Well, I see a way to make a recommendation today where he negotiates with them to bring a contract back. So at least we have a contract. We can be running this in parallel. We'll have a contract to consider in October, and we'll have a Regent report to consider.
I mean, I understand what is best for this community. I don't want to say, "Oh, well, we've already started on this path, we can't turn around." And all respect to you. I understand, you know way more about all of this than I do. I mean, yeah, I understand that, but I just, I just don't want to sit by and stay, because I really do want to make sure that we get what is going to fit for this community best. It's a small community, it's a lot of money. And so, yeah, I mean, I think that's fine. We can say, "Okay, well, let's negotiate with Wallace and Hydroscience," and then there's no final contract until next month, and we still get more information. I don't want, yeah, I just don't want to say, "Okay, well, we've made that decision." Whatever happens, happens. That's the way it's going to be.
President, we made the decision, and also with what my understanding of what Polo is doing is a distributed type of treatment system, which the board considered and voted against. We've made this decision. And to suggest we're going to come back and revisit it? We have a whole bunch more people in this community. What do you say to them? That their voice doesn't matter? A lot of people, you know, have had that. I asked Mr. Erdel, "Have you run this by the Regional Board?" And I think Mr. Savage was talking that, you know, with some plant other than MBR, and you get a new order to treat to a higher level, you may have wasted tens of millions of dollars, because now you have to build another new plant, or you have to then end up going solving. And then lastly, about doing the right thing for this community, if you have an expensive project, you better have a good engineer doing your plans and specifications, because if you don't, I've done this, you are going to have a big problem. And to have a company that has done, both of these companies, and there were others that have done this work, I think they even showed their bid or their estimate versus their bid, and the final costs are within that. If you don't have someone competent to do that work in California and has experience with public agency, you are going to cost this community a lot of money. You will cost it a lot of money.
Okay.
I'm prepared to make a motion out of the past.
Well, no, this is why we're here to have conversations and make difficult decisions, though. That's part of the process.
I'd like to make a comment.
Just to honor the process, that we started in June, and Mr. Parks, Director Parks put in a lot of time, a lot of time, a lot of time to get here. And this is the process that got us here, backed by board direction all the way. And to come and stop now would be insulting to the many members of this community who have wanted us to continue along this line.
I'm sure Director Nelson's trying to get in.
Director Nelson?
It's quite all right. I'm at a point here, I appreciated and took the assurances of...
Can you speak up a little, please?
Wallace, can you hear me? Do I need...
Yeah.
Okay, it's my, let me see if... Well, anyway, I'll just cut it short. I think since we have two qualified based on what we're supposed to do, I'm willing to proceed with what we have today. If Regent is going to still, through Polo, is still going to put something up, there's no reason it can't be looked at compared to what is coming out of whoever we select. So I don't think it's going to be put back. I think we need to move forward, though. And I think as long as we're looking at both at the same time, I think that's, I'm comfortable with that. So that's all I got.
Thank you. I have a question. Just, I noticed this is kind of going backwards a little bit. Wallace Group provides assessment engineering services.
Wallace Group can provide assessment engineering services, yes.
Can Hydro Science?
I didn't ask them specifically, so I don't know. Although, yeah.
All right. Since I'm chairing, I'm not going to be in the position to make a motion, but is there, do we want to entertain a motion?
I'll try and make a motion. And I'll just say again, you know, this is difficult, because there are actually other firms that provided proposals that were, in my opinion, qualified, too. But the process brought us these two. And so it's no disrespect to the one that we don't pick here or any of the other ones that didn't get to this point. It's just that we had a ranking, and Wallace is a local firm there in San Luis Obispo, tri-county area. And they have an impressive team that they've assembled there. And so I'm going to make a motion that we direct General Manager to negotiate and come back in October with a contract for Wallace Group to take our next step.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's the first and the second. Is that within our budget? I just want to make sure it's original estimates, so whatever we're negotiating has to be within.
We'll be able to discuss it when it comes to it. We're not executing.
Right, we're not executing contracts.
He's going to negotiate and bring one back.
All right, there's the first.
I just have one comment.
Yes.
I think that we were talking about those two, that Wallace Group is extremely qualified, and I think they did fantastic job inside the community. I see your statement in my mind.
I have experience with this, so. All right, there's the first and the second. There's been discussion. We need a roll call.
We do need a roll call. If I can, well, take your roll call, and then I have a question for you after regarding negotiations, it's fine.
Okay.
I think you do the roll call.
I do, but I mean, let's get through the formalities.
Fair enough.
Okay, so motion is by Director Farram, second by Director Parks, or sorry, Director Nelson. So Director Farram?
Hi.
Director Nelson?
Hi.
Director Parks?
Hi.
Vice President Palmer?
Hi.
So Carrie Sworero. So my question, ultimately, as I go into this negotiation, which I'm perfectly happy to do, I heard the comment about, you know, it's got to be within our budget, obviously, or I wouldn't bring you back to contract. There was a lot of conversation in this about concerns, particularly from Director Parks and a little bit from others. Perhaps offline, you can tell me what it is specifically, or ideally now, but you can tell me what is specifically that I can help you by obtaining it from them or whatever to get you to a comfort level that gets you to where you say, "Yeah, okay, now I'm good." Or, "I'm not going to be good ever," or whatever the answer might be. But you see where I'm going with that? I'm just trying to say, "Okay, what is it that we can help you with?"
Just that, you know, because they had all the projects in the back of this, obviously, and there was nothing, there were none that pertained to that. You know, the only one that Hydroscience had was the Franken, which really is not an effluent system, so, or not a spec, I guess, if I make terminology, nothing.
So I know some specific examples.
Yeah, we did talk to them about commercial, but that was always just kind of, yeah, oh yeah, we've done commercial, but that's, there was nothing more specific than that ever from many of them. So like I said, I just want to make sure that we are down to an apples-to-apples comparison for everybody to be able to voice their opinion and make a decision on which way to go forward.
Are we good? Are you good?
So.
All right, thank you, everyone. Good discussion and moving forward, so thank you. Item eight, resolution authorizing the president to vote on behalf of the district regarding the Lafco Special District Board of Directors election.
Right, so by the fact that we're a special district, we're a member of the California Special District Association, CSDA, Lafco is the organization, Santa Barbara County Lafco in particular, local area information commission is the organization that basically gives us our sewer power. That's the group that we beat with, and I have to send another quarterly update to, again, this quarter, to tell them about our ongoing process, trying to get to 218 to provide a community solution for a wastewater treatment plant. Both those bodies occasionally elect officers, commissioner or a board director's member for CSDA. Historically, this organization has not agendized them, and in fact, I will note that many boards like this don't ever even really get involved with the elections. There's kind of a unique situation right now. Lafco is trying to fill a vacancy for the representative of special districts. So on Lafco, you have city representatives, you have county representatives, you have representatives of special districts, and you have at-large members as well. So they're trying to fill that position. There are two people that are in a runoff, it turns out. Their names are listed in the agenda, Susan Klein, Rochelle, and Doreen Lee Johnson. They're both members of California Special Districts and both interested in the position. I have heard from both of them saying, "Hey, tell your board to elect me," you know, kind of thing, not surprisingly. I would argue that, you know, while I think this is an important vote and certainly could have impact on us in the future, you know, the process of agendizing every time one of these comes up, I think is more bureaucracy than this board is seemed interested in. So this item, Resolution 2504, is really just saying, you know what, you're going to officially say by resolution, the president can vote on our behalf. And if they're not sure who to vote for, we can agendize a full item, and you guys can debate the candidates. Otherwise, the then newly-elected president can vote on your behalf. So that's what this item's about. I would tell you that my recommendation is one of two, either approve 2504, the resolution Lafco, or debate the two candidates, select one, and direct the president to vote for them. In the case of the current Lafco election, there was a tie, so they have to have a runoff between these two, so they're looking for as many special districts as possible to vote in this runoff election. So that's the back.
Okay. Any public comment?
Yes, Andrew. So we're going to be deciding, or who is going to be the person that this board selects. I think those people that are the candidates need to come to one of our board meetings, introduce themselves, tell us about themselves, and allow the public to make a comment on, try to influence your vote prior to that next meeting where they will be making a decision on candidacy. I just don't think that the president should be allowed to make a decision behind closed doors. You know, everything just needs to be really out in front of the public, and I think that we should invite those candidates here to one of our meetings in advance of any vote. And they can pitch themselves to the community, and we can, you know, tell you who we like.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online?
Tom Nelson still has his hand up. Perhaps he wants to comment, or that's leftover from before.
That's a new one.
Okay.
It's on this. As I look at this, it looks like the vote's going to be September 19th. That's nine days from today. I don't think we're going to have a meeting before then. I think, unless I'm wrong, am I reading this incorrectly? It says that the runoff election between the top two candidates is being held and votes are due to Lafco by September 19, 2025. I don't think there's time for anything other than a discussion here. I don't know either of the candidates. I trust our president to do the research and to make a confident decision, and therefore I would move to approve the Resolution 2504 to allow our president to make that decision.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to second that, but I'd like to maybe ask a question as well, the chair. So I'll second that. Question for council, with the president making that decision, is there any prohibition to an individual director that would then contact the president and say, "Oh, I know this person, I know that person," and tell them what they think? Not with other board members, you know, from the Brown Act, but just with three individual board members, just one way to the president, say, you know, "I see who's there, and I know this person," and then the president can make that decision? Is that...
That would be a violation of the Brown Act. That constitutes a legal meeting. So as the general manager outlined, your options are either to delegate the voting authority to the president, as the resolution suggests, or select a candidate, that is one of the options that is on the action agenda right now. But for the president to be gathering information or input from more than one of you would constitute a violation of the Brown Act.
But thank you for that, because that's important for us all to know.
Right. Well, and the resolution also calls for the president to be able to put it on the agenda if they want to discuss. So if there's debate or issues, he or she is uncertain, then they can bring it to the board.
I appreciate the comments from the council, and my second still stands.
Okay, so there's a first and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Director Nelson?
Hi.
Director Farram? Director Palmer?
Hi.
Director Parks?
Hi.
Counselors, thank you. Item nine, discussion of possible Proposition 218 assessment approach, round two.
Round two, correct. All right, give me a second, sorry.
Sorry.
Cut up here. Okay, I'm trying to share my screen, it'll be up in a second, hopefully. All right, so we started this conversation last month. I don't expect to conclude it tonight, any more than I did last month. In fact, as part of the priority discussion, in the next item or the item after that, we can talk about assessment engineers and their role in particular. I'm going to touch on it here, but that is a critical part of this whole discussion. And so I can get this to move forward, here we go. All right, so for those who worked here last month, what is an assessment? It's basically a services fee levied on a property to pay for a public improvement or a service that benefits the property. In our case, a sewer that benefits the property. It's different from other charges that are on your property tax bill, even though it is on your property tax bill, such as your parcel taxes and such. It's still collected by the county, it's still paid twice a year or once, if you pay it all at once, as opposed to a monthly bill, that sort of thing. Unlike what we're doing currently, we don't charge every parcel currently the special tax. We exempt the church, and we give a discount to a couple other folks for specific reasons. This is something there are no exceptions to, right? Every parcel pays toward the... This is something there are no exceptions to, right? Every parcel pays toward the assessment. Right now, and I tried to, to help divide this for the board and the public last month, we're talking about the construction assessment. Rates that you would pay for ongoing use of a system is a separate thing, right? We're only talking about construction at the current moment. So when we get to rates, you'll do a rate study based on projections of O and M and, you know, reserves you have to have, all that sort of stuff, and all that goes into an annual rate. So again, separate in your mind construction, putting pipes in the ground, houses, that sort of stuff, as opposed to the ongoing flushing of toilets, sinks, and running of the dishwasher and those washing machine. So the O and M will be a separate two eighteen vote. All right. Just want to be clear about that. All right. So I, I kind of put this in quotes last time. I think it still makes sense to be in quotes, and that is the usual process. There is no absolutely normal process. It's not like a prescribed, you'll do A, B, C, D. But this is how I've seen it go in the past. A board considers, based on whatever input they want, how to fairly and equitably distribute assessments to properties. Now, what's fair and equitable to one person may not be entirely fair and equitable to another, right? Generally, that comes down to, wait, I don't want to pay as much. Let's let somebody else pay a little more, kind of a thing, right? But as long as it's fair and equitable, and we can tie it to the specific benefit that a parcel is receiving, you can generally get through the process without too much difficulty. There is a requirement, a legal requirement to hire an individual who's known as the assessment engineer, who puts together those crazy spreadsheets that allocate all the costs that are going to be incurred to each parcel and does the math to say, you know, parcel A is going to, it's going to cost parcel A this much, parcel B that much, parcel C different amount altogether. You hold the vote, and then if the vote is successful, you know, you, you begin the annual assessment after that. In our case, you know, we wouldn't even begin contemplating construction until we've had a successful prop two eighteen. Additional funding like grants can be considered, but keep in mind, when we get into the conversation about grants, and I know we all want to see grants, and we're going to pursue as many grants as possible. Generally speaking, from the assessment engineer's perspective, your, your, your proportion of the total cost and still your proportion, the grant offsets some of that, right? So that too has to be equitably spread across the entire district. So you still calculate the amount, and what the actual payment is is based on how many grants you can get. So determining that basis, and I want to be really clear here, I mentioned a minute ago, there's specific law that you have to follow to do this, right? So we're kind of talking in generalities here, and I want to be clear, like we've done in prior conversations, that you know, anything we talk about here eventually has to go through that process, get, can, can kind of agreed to by a assessment engineer. Counsel will make sure, yeah, you're on the right path. And generally speaking, the things that we're talking about tonight, and we talked about last month, I've seen them used before, so I know we're on safe ground. But if we go too far afield into something rather esoteric somewhere, I'm going to say, hold on, just be sure that you understand that legally, we may or may not be able to do something. So again, it's got to be tied to the specific benefit received by a parcel. What you use can be really simple, something like parcel size. That's the one that back in the day, NV five, who we hired to do an initial assessment engineer's report said, this is the one thing that doesn't change. It's the easiest one to use. Therefore, we're going to set up this initial spreadsheet based on parcel size. They do all the calculation, as I said. And then, you know, we're going to talk in a minute here about something that I think is we all recognize can change over time, meaning we're going to talk about something like zoning. Should we use zoning to say, well, that's a residential parcel, and these others, whether they're a church, or a restaurant, or a hotel, or an office, are not residential. And the board kicked around last month the, the concept of, well, maybe there should be some different approach for non-residential as opposed to residential. Keep in mind that zoning can be changed over time. A parcel that's currently commercial can, over time, become residential, and parcels that are currently residential over time could be something other than residential. So just know that when we get into things that change over time, you're beginning to push away from certainty into future answer. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't do it. It also doesn't mean that there aren't other ways to address it, but just keep in mind that when we set the initial assessment, that doesn't change. So let's say the assessment's a thirty year assessment, and my house is currently zoned residential, and fifteen years down the road, it becomes, you know, I don't know, an office or a hotel or whatever. You don't go back and change the assessment. That assessment stays. There are additional fees you might charge me if I did that, but that's outside the base assessment. That, that first assessment stays until pay. Okay? Somebody pays that in some fashion. So I mentioned this a minute ago, you know, you can have the simplest one, and that's what NV five recommend, NV five recommended, and that's just use lots, right? It's the one thing that doesn't change. If somebody splits a lot, well, the cost gets split between two lots. Somebody joins two lots together, well, the cost gets joined to the one, one lot. So that's the one thing that does not change over time. Zoning and use, things like, oh, the lot's currently vacant, but it might be a house, or something else in the future. Is it residential currently, so on and so forth. The list goes on here. All of those are subject to change over time. Doesn't, again, mean you can't do it that way. And I think your board kind of suggested, yeah, you at least want to consider that in, you know, moving forward sort of a fashion. So you can consider that. Going back for just a minute to the whole conversation about construction versus operations and maintenance O and M. So I put this slide together just to kind of help drive this, this concept a little further and help people get, get it solidified in their, in their minds. We're talking about construction here, not O and M, right? So my example is really simple. If you had a three bedroom home that has an EDU, meaning a physically separate building on the same lot, and that EDU is a one bedroom with a kitchen, right? Small, kind of straightforward. So really what you've got is a four bedroom house with two kitchens, right? From a lot perspective and what you're servicing. The next one that I put in here is a four bedroom home with an outside kitchen. Well, you've still got four bedrooms and two kitchens. You've got an indoor kitchen and an outdoor kitchen. Or maybe you just go, well, I've got a five bedroom home. From a, from a construction assessment perspective, you're probably going to treat all of those the same. All right. Now, you might consider their lot size, but from a, what, what are they doing on the lot, you're probably going to treat all of those the same. We often use the term EDU. It's kind of an equivalent dwelling unit, EDU, equivalent dwelling unit. And it's often based on a residential home, because that's the thing that most of your parcels, particularly in our area, are. They're mostly residential. So one EDU is easy for most of us to wrap our brain around. And so that's, that's what you typically tie it to. So when we talk about this in the future, we'll probably talk about some sort of assessment unit or EDU as a, as a base. All right. And so that's the construction side. For those three example homes, which might be just one home, although, you know, kind of divided up a little differently, construction wise, they're probably going to be treated the same. On the O and M side, though, right, just to help drive this home, you might treat them differently, right? Somebody that has an EDU, well, they're just using it as an in-law quarters, or maybe their, their son, daughter, somebody else is staying in. Well, you might still just treat that as one EDU. EU, right, sorry, sorry, EDU. But if that EDU, accessory dwelling unit, is a short-term rental, much like a hotel room, you might say, no, we're going to charge more for those from an O and M perspective. Because what flows out of that home might be different based on it being a short-term rental, as opposed to, you know, grandma or grandpa or mom, dad, whoever living out in the A. So I'm just trying to help, again, separate construction. They're probably all the same. When it comes to O and M, would be very typical for you to treat them differently. Okay? And then I've listed some resources here for, these are the same ones I provided last time. People want to see some actual assessments that were completed. You can see the crazy spreadsheet that NV five put together. You can see what Los Angeles did, Kayakas. Kayakas is a rate assessment, so that's really more focused on O and M. There's guides in here to two eighteen and an overview of some different approaches that was found online. So at the last meeting, Director Palmer suggested, you know, hey, what would it be like to play around with this a little bit? Just to understand some examples. I can find it real quick. Let me pull this up real quick, and I'll share this screen with you.
And
Hold on a second.
While you, while you're waiting, if I, if I may just add to what the general manager said.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I, I think that the, the important part to keep in mind is that, that at the end of the day, you know, the board will consider different approaches, talk about different approaches, different ways of, of, of trying to assess it, but, but by law, at the end of the day, it will be the assessment engineer that's going to determine and prepare a report as to what is the most equitable manner or most accurate manner to, to spread the benefit to each parcel, and would that benefit the, the proportionate cost. So this is important to do and, and have, you know, and, and be able to look at different scenarios and different approaches. But, but at the end of the day, the, the engineer, the assessment engineer will be the one who will bring something to the board that in his professional opinion will accomplish what, what the law requires. And, and, you know, that's, that is his, his stamp goes on that report and, and his professional license, you know, backs it. So just wanted to make sure that, that everybody's clear on that.
Thank you for that.
So again, we're, we're talking about kind of, you know, freewheeling a little bit here, you know, kind of spitballing it a little bit, although these are all approaches that have been used in the past, so I'm sure that land use and parcel size, do that, an assessment engineer would say, yeah, I can, I can come up with a coefficient related to land use that makes sense and is legally defensible. But they will, to counsel's point and what I tried to say earlier, they will have to agree, and yes.
So they have to agree. So we can come up, just so I'm understanding, we can come up with what we think are appropriate variables that the engineer could come in and say, here, don't do this, do this instead.
They would come in with recommendations. They didn't think it was a fair and equitable approach. So I'm only showing a couple lines of this. I have to be careful. I can't show this whole thing because there's some legalese around displaying some of this information in public. Nothing that's being shown in this slide, in this page is, is protected. So this, what you're looking at here is basically a subset, you know, only thirty-five rows of thirty-four parcels of the almost three hundred eighty that we have in the district. And so, you know, you can see the assessment engineer, this is the spreadsheet. I'm sorry, this was taken from the spreadsheet that NV five initially put together, and I'm going to walk you through it just really quickly. You can see here in the left, column A is the assessment number. They assigned that assessment number. The APN is the APN is APN, right? Every parcel has one. The, the acreage of a lot is part of your, what's, what's recorded with the county. They did the math to figure out what the lot square footage is, you know, the owner's, the owner of record. This use code, column I, yeah, I guess I can touch this. So column I is when your parcel, you know, when it, when it's noted with the assessor, you have a, the use code that says this is what this parcel is intended or can be used for, and it's a category thing, right? So code seven hundred must be residential, hotel, motel, or resorts, whereas code one thousand is retail sales. And if you're used to looking at how properties are zoned, you would know that they often are abandoned things, right? It's like, oh, you can be this, 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 or this under this code. So that's, that's kind of what's going on in there. Then keep in mind that when NV five did this work, we were still looking at a three-zone approach, an MBR plant with injection wells. So I'll show you how that matters in just a minute, but so that zone in all, in column K is, these were all properties that were in the original identified zone one. I'm going to come back to that use type factor in just a few minutes. So what NV five did is this is the crazy part of the spreadsheet. This is the crazy part of the spreadsheet that took all of the costs that were identified by Stan Tech as part of their thirty percent design related to that system I was just describing. A three, three-zone implementation, MBR plant, injection wells, and so forth. And they, they broke it down by each subgrouping. So this first group is overhead and construction support services. The next one's the collection system, and so on and so forth. So what they then did, they meaning NV five, is they did this sort of all zones assessment. They take all of those calculations, right? And they put it into these buckets, and you can see them kind of going across. There's the parcel number, there's the square footage, overhead in column F, these collection systems in columns G through J, all the way across. And eventually, once I get all the way over, it comes up with a, you know, here's a total that that particular parcel would pay for, under an approach that we divided up the cost of that particular system. That's what they would pay for that, that parcel. It'd call them whatever that is, T. Part of what they did to get to that was they applied what they call constants. And these ones on the left here in columns A and B were constants they use. You know, what's the average parcel square footage? You can do that math, right? Take all the parcels, add them all together, you do the division, and you come up with that parcel size. And they use that so that they could get to a fair and equitable approach to allocating the costs. And I think that, you know, given the, the variability of parcel sizes, whether it's fair and equitable, we can have that discussion on another day. But that's the approach they used. The cost they used was just over forty-six million, because that was the then defined cost of the system that we were looking at. We've looked at lots of different approaches since then. Some of them are lower, some of them are a little higher, but that's the cost that they used. So they went through this whole process. I then went through and added these, these factors that are in columns D and E, just, just to begin to help people understand that, you know, this is the way it's done, if nothing else. So I, I mentioned that I talked about using that, that use that's over here in column M, this use factor. So I applied a use factor based on the current use of that property, meaning is it residential, these ones here in purple in rows nine through whatever that is, twenty-two. And I just threw some numbers at it. There's nothing magical in these numbers. I literally just threw some numbers at it so I could, could sort it out. So in my case, I said, well, you know, if, if one EDU is a residential property, you know, maybe an ag property, from a use perspective, they lessen that because it's ag, right? They don't flush toilets on ag properties typically. A church, I'd said, just, I made it point oh one bigger just so I could find churches in my list. Industrial, I said, well, they might be putting something down the sink that's of more concentration than a home. So I said, one and a half. And again, I just went through all of the use types I could find in this, in the original spreadsheet. And then I said, well, okay, let's say you're going to do it based on parcel size and that use. Well, you have to decide, well, of the total cost, how much of it's going to go to use, and how much of it's going to go to parcel size. So I very simply up here in E, four, and five, said, you know, you got to divide it a hundred percent. And I said, well, I just made it up. Seventy-five percent went to parcel size and twenty-five percent went to the ag use. The point of this really is, you know, you could begin changing these constants. The whole spreadsheet will change accordingly. And then, much like the, the assessment engineer did this all zones, I simplified it. I didn't worry about zones or allocating each of the individual cost, just to give, give you a sense. And I just added very simply, you know, okay, here's, if you did all the constants, constants based on what I threw at it, this is what you would see, you know, so Matty's there at the top, you know, because that, they happen to be assessment parcel number one-one. Now, doesn't mean that Matty's going to pay that, right? Because this is part of what we're discussing. But the point of this is, it's very simple to get from what you have a cost for the total project and a methodology to how you want to spread that, you can immediately apply it to every parcel. Okay? I did this in about an hour. So it didn't take that long, because I already had the, the base spreadsheet. Now, since NV five originally did this spreadsheet, have there been changes to parcels? Yes, there have been some, some splits and some joints of parcels. So when our newest assessment engineer, wherever we end up hiring eventually, Yes, there have been some, some splits and some joints of parcels. So when our newest assessment engineer, whoever we end up hiring eventually comes back, they'll have to verify all this data. Um, but they'll still be able to apply whatever the board and public says. Yeah, you know, we think it shouldn't be seventy-five, twenty-five. We think it should be fifty-fifty or, you know, ninety, ten, or whatever you decide. Point is pretty straightforward. Those who are familiar with Excel know, you know, once you've got the base formula set up, you just tweak a couple of things and you can change it pretty much as well. I will say that, um, while some parcels were significantly impacted by adding use because I, for instance, said, well, I looked at the amount of effluent that we know that's going to be coming out of, um, out of Matty's. They, um, they have a capacity of around fourteen thousand gallons, uh, on a daily basis. That's a lot more than any residential folks, right? And so I pumped it way up, right? Just kind of randomly. If you look at that other, uh, um, constant spreadsheet, you can say I pumped it way up. I made it, uh, fifty for a hotel. So I said, a hotel is fifty times as, as much as a, as a residential. That's not based on anything other than just, it was around numbers, so I used it. So I did this just to give you a sense of the fact that this is doable, um, with straightforward items such as this. I also wanted to show you back to this. Again, you know, when NV5 did the, the initial assessment, they went through and they allocated by zone because they said, oh, this parcel would be in zone one, this one in two, this one in three. They allocated specific pieces of equipment that were needed for a given zone and you can do that, right? So it's, it's, it's pretty straightforward once you, you've set the base up. So with that, I'm going to stop talking. I'll happily take questions from the board and then go from there.
Okay, questions?
Okay.
Uh, any public comments? Is there one online?
Uh, there's one online.
Okay. Go ahead.
Catherine.
Hi, Catherine. Um, so I, I, on that NV5, I'm not sure where Mr. Savage got, um, a lot of that formula information. That assessment engineer report from NV5 that was twenty-two thousand dollars a few years ago was based solely on, uh, parcel size. So I don't know, the rest of that is Guy Savage and that's great. Take it or leave it. More importantly, this idea of, um, breaking the two eighteen vote into these different steps, this is new. And I think it's important because you run the risk, hear me now, believe me later, you run the risk of having it appear that you have attempted to make, to hide effectively what our assessments and treat them as properly related fees. So if you're planning to go to the public with a vote on the construction cost and not tell them how much their individual, that they're on the hook for lateral connection grinder pump, their lifts to the sewer line, that's in addition to their piece of construction, and then you're going to come back later, you've got two O and Ms. Have you, are we going to do two more two eighteen votes? Because this costs a bloody fortune every time we do this, folks. So one O and M for maintaining all the sewer lines and the lift stations you built. That's your O and M, that's this town's O and M. And those get more expensive over time. As sewer systems age, it gets more expensive to maintain them. Number, now our last, hopefully, assessment is the solving O and M. You should know that Santinaz is already paying. The unknown variable there is every time the solving sewage treatment plant has a violation, discharge violation or other, that cost is going to get distributed where? Also onto Los Olivos. So the idea that you're going to break this into so many assessment votes that the public doesn't know what they're getting hit with is terrifying. Additionally, federal funding, we, it's pretty clear, there's no federal funding for at least the next three years. And if there is any, it's not coming to California. So at some point, let's talk to the public about the fact that they're paying for this out of pocket or they're paying financing on loans. And let them make a decision about really whether they want the largest, most expensive project you can dream up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
Just a couple. And I, I appreciate this coming, coming back because it makes us think about it, you know, a lot. It, it just occurs to me that, you know, obviously zoning, you know, has to play a factor. And you, a restaurant is going to use more than a single-family dwelling, a hotel, you know, more. So somehow we're going to have to have factors that account for that. I think, uh, the other issue is what the use is because, um, we have to understand, you know, how a change in use would affect things, which reminds me, we've started some time ago, a discussion with the county and what the planning department does. If there's a, if they're going to approve a change in zoning or a change in use, um, you know, there may or may not be an equitable remedy that we would have to be able to, to be fair. No, nothing's going to be perfect, but, um, I think we still need to, it reminds me, Mr. Savage, we should probably follow up on that again. Um, but yeah, the, the zoning, the, the use and the size is, are the ones that come, come to mind. And again, I, I want to understand how change in those can be addressed as well.
Thanks, Paul. Tom Nelson? Anything?
No, I, I just, I, uh, I don't like the idea of multiple two eighteen votes on different assessments, but I think we need to get the, the assessments done for each one of them and have it ready for the two eighteen vote because, uh, there are different parts of it that are going to be looked at differently. Uh, and so I, I, I think that's where we need to go, but I think we need to do each one of them. Um, and then be able to put it together as what the whole package is.
Okay. Thank you. I have two questions. One is regarding the two eighteen, it's always been the case that there would be, there would be a vote for the capital construction cost and then a separate one for the ongoing fee structure for ongoing operations. Is that correct?
As long as I've been here, that's been the discussion. And I, I will have, um, rate studies are done typically every five years. Solving does them every five years. ID one probably does one every five years, I don't know, um, give or take. Uh, you know, so, uh, different, but they're generally done on a five-year cycle, um, which often leads to a community rate Prop two eighteen type vote every five year. Now, people don't, uh, pay as close attention to it as they maybe should, um, because it's just kind of there, right? Uh, but you do see occasionally if, if rates go up too much, you know, people get all upset and want to repeal them back to a prior rate or what have you. Um, part of the reason it's done every five years is, you know, there was discussion about, or public commentary about, you know, what happens when you have, uh, the discharge, it's illegal, it costs you money. Or what happens when you have to upgrade something? Or what happens when your capital improvement plan, CIP, says, oh, a line from here to there has to be replaced since twenty-five years old? That CIP, capital improvement project plan, often moves on its own cycle, but the cost expected in the subsequent five years are then included in those rates. So yeah, that's a very typical cycle that you're going through constantly with any jurisdiction that provides a service like sewer. Um, so it's, it, in my mind, it's always been that way. But I, I think it, it's a valid point for sure that people need to understand what all of the costs are. And that's part of the reason we're raising it now, right? We didn't, we didn't say, oh, we're, we're just going to ignore rates. We publicly said, no, there's going to be a separate two eighteen on rates because you're going to want to know, by the time you get to doing a rate study, you're going to want to know, well, what's the latest from solving, right? What's in their CIP that we might have to pay a share? And that will get put into your rates. If you try to do that at the beginning of the structure, you may not know, right? You'd be, you'd be potentially somewhere in the middle of their existing rate study. So you'd take a couple of years and you wouldn't be able to do, you know, it's just, it's easier if you get in sync with where solving is so that your rate study immediately follows there. So you can always be projecting out five years based on what's all.
If I may add to that when I'm president?
Go ahead, Mark.
Prop two eighteen and the, 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 the whole structure of the constitutional amendment deals with many different types of assessments and property-related fees. And, and there are actually different processes for those kind of fees. And as general manager identified, what we're now dealing with is, is the cost of construction. It's, it's building the pool for lack of better comparison. How much is it going to cost to build this thing, to put it up? And, and that is subject to a different process under Prop two eighteen. Then how much is it going to cost to run it? Uh, you know, we got to change chlorine every day. We got four lifeguards, we got electricity, we got this and that. Those are all cost of operation. And those are rates. And Prop two eighteen provides for actually a different voting system for rates than it does for capital costs. So yeah, there are different type of, um, Prop two eighteen processes applicable to what we're all going to be doing here moving forward. That doesn't mean that we're trying to split it up, doesn't mean that we're piecemealing it. It just means that there are provisions for, you know, this is construction, this is a, a, a special benefit assessment. This is not operational rates. So we will be going through at least a couple of Prop two eighteen processes before this, uh, um, you know, this becomes a reality. So thank you for letting me interject that.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, counsel. Um, thank you, counsel, for that. And I, what I, what I think I heard, um, counsel say and what I've observed, um, you can go and look on the county's website for the last time state, for Michigan and sewer district has changed their rates. It's a, it's a different, it's a Prop two eighteen process, but it's a different, uh, animal than the construction cost, which is, you know, a lot different. It's done more frequently and it has to be done more frequently. So, um, if you want to look at the city solving or the, or the county, find out the last time they, they did that, I think you, you'd understand how that process works. It's simply they have a board, uh, hearing that has protest votes. If I understand that right, and counsel has addressed, corrected them all. Um, but it is a simpler process, but it's still productivity. Am I right on that, counsel?
Uh, yes, you're, you're absolutely correct. It's, it's a, yeah, the, the rate setting vote is, is, is different than a, than a special assessment vote.
Thank you. So I do have a question on the solving contract and where that gets recognized. Is there's any part of that that gets recognized in the capital construction project or if that's all in operational maintenance or?
Yeah, so, uh, by way of responding, it's, it's twofold, right? We're going to have, I, I forget the exact number, forgive me, but it was around five million dollars of a buy-in cost to buy capacity from the city solving. That will be part of the construction assessment. We've talked about it as, you know, when I talked through the, the draft working document months ago, right? It was in there. And that's all part of that construction assessment. Uh, the separate process is this rate thing. And, um, we will be the, the downstream to some extent from the solving rate process, right? So one of the duties of this board, longer term, will be every time solving wants to go through a rate study is take a hard look at, well, what are they doing? And, you know, how is it affecting us versus others and so on? Um, and so, yeah, there, there are two separate things. So the, but that buy-in would be part of that. But their future CIPs would be part of the, the O and M. Uh, the other thing I would say is, um, you're going to see this in a few minutes when we get into discussion about priorities. That's one of the things on my list, just began tearing apart and, and working on the solving contract. They've said they want to see something similar to what is in place for Santinaz. Um, it's a, that document's very short. Uh, I can tell you right now, the council's going to want more things in it because it's, it's a nineteen seventies document in a, in a two thousand twenties world. Um, just doesn't work. Um, and I think there are some things that we're going to want to put in there, uh, by way of protections for citizens within the district, uh, that don't exist today. I've, I've looked at it and thought through some of them. Um, and I can also say that, you know, uh, I've spoken to Lockreyzer in Santinaz and said, hey, you know, I, I'm going to be rewriting this thing. You know what's going to happen, right? Santinaz, as soon as we get to an agreement with Solman, they're going to say, okay, Santinaz, time to date yours. It should look like, like Los Olivos, right? Uh, and it's, it's probably a good thing for both Solman and Santinaz to do that because again, they're, they're working off a very little agreement that, um, it, it's there, but you know, if push came to shove, I, I, I would, would want to be the guy going to port over it. It's, you know, long argument and I'm not sure who would win. So we'll be tightening it up to, to try and address the question.
Okay, thanks. So the five million would be recognized again?
Correct. Sorry, that's the short answer. Yes, five million would be part of the construction itself.
I get it. Okay. Um, guidance, what's next? Because I know we're saying we need a decision.
Yeah. So I, I guess, um, there, there's no decision required here today. Let me say that. Um, this was just agendized so you can discuss. If you have specific direction, you want something, you want to see something, you want me to put something together for you related to this, that's why we agendized this. So again, transparent to the public to know what we're up to, give you guys a chance to weigh in, give you a chance to see a little bit. Um, if there are other things you want to play around with, I'm happy to spend a little more time, you know, poking at a spreadsheet. Um, whatever, whatever makes sense for your board. That's, that was the reason we agendized this, so you could have the discussion. Yeah, those links I'll post it on the website. Those links that you had up there, which one? Just for the different assessments we have. They're all, they're all on the website. I'm posting the presentations after the meeting so people can go look at the presentation. Just kind of see how other people have done. Correct.
Then, maybe, um, one thing to consider, I don't know what you would think of this, Mr. Savage, is, uh, we could invite a, um, an assessment engineer or two, maybe NV5 to technical committee where we can, I mean, we learn, you know, we learn a lot in the proposals we got from the, um, you know, from, from the, uh, the design effort that we did, you know, oftentimes you can get some assistance from, from some firms on, on that. So maybe we do a technical, uh, committee on that.
Yeah, just, I think.
It allows to do similar work.
Yeah.
It helps. Thank you. All right. Unless there's any other discussion, we can move on to item ten.
Just real quick, check back with Director Nelson.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Tom.
Make sure he's.
Director Nelson, any other?
No, not at all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Number ten, discussion of general managers' priorities.
You start talking about the general manager's priorities and then you're clear.
Really the district's priority, the general manager's.
Okay. So let me, let me share my screen again just because it's that kind of a night. Um, all right, so, um, eventually, there we go. All right, so, um, let me just say that, uh, I put together a non-exhaustive list of all of the things that I know need to be addressed. Um, and, um, in particular, I focused on the things that I'm working on currently at some level. Um, and I think when you look at this list, there's probably three things you should think about it. Um, the first one is, um, if you stack this thing top to bottom, is that the order you would want me to work on something? Because that's kind of how I approach this, right? I know I have to do all this work eventually, um, but, um, there's not nearly enough hours in a day, week, month to go and do all of this in any given month. So I'm working it in this order, all right? Um, and this reflects reality as of when I put this in. So, um, you know, if you said, I'm just going to make it up. No, 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 guy, we think social media, which you have listed at the bottom of the list, you need to work that as your first priority. Okay, fine. I will set aside everything else and work on social media. Um, I don't think you're going to say that, but you might. Um, so that's the first thing. Is, is this kind of in the stacked correct order? The second thing is, um, if there's something on here and you say, you know what, this really is not the best and highest This really is not the best and highest use of your time. Um, great, we can take it off the list, but that means somebody has to do it or it has to not get done, right? So, you have some options on the somebody has to do it side. Um, a board member could pick something up that they're not currently doing. Um, we could try and engage the, somehow, uh, the right other community members or whatever. You could say, you know, uh, Guy, that really is something you should hand off to the district engineer, um, and have him do it. We've kind of done some of this with, by hiring Civic Soul. So, I've got less work now on the accounting side than I had previously. Um, it's a more streamlined process. Um, there could be others that you might say, you know what? That, that thing that you're doing just doesn't hold value compared to everything else that we're trying to get done right now. Let's not do that for a while, whatever that might be. And so, when you look at this list, that's, in my mind, how I would recommend, think of it. Um, and of course, I don't know if I mentioned it. Of course, you could hire somebody additionally. Um, we didn't budget for additional staff. Um, I will say that, you know, as I've said before, you know, my contract essentially says work 30 hours a month. Um, I, I'm not looking to expand that significantly, you know? Yeah, I'm happy to put in an extra 10 hours a month and, and not even worry about it. And if it gets up to 50 or 60, I might ask the, the board for an additional 10 hours. Uh, but I'm at about where I want to be. Um, so, if you're saying, hey, you know, we really need somebody going to work 20 hours a week as, as opposed to 30 hours a month, um, let's have that conversation. I'm open to it, whatever you want to do. So, that having been said, let me run through this priority list real quick. Um, again, this is kind of when I think about, when I get up in the morning, if I'm going to be working, doing anything, this is kind of how I, how I approach work. I check for emails, phone calls, and I make sure our bills are paid. To me, that's kind of the basics, right? Um, the next thing I do is like this meeting. There's meeting coordination, just attending, hosting everything that has to be done, so on and so forth. Um, when it comes to meetings, my first and highest priority is always this meeting, the public meeting, where decisions are made, the regular board meetings. Um, there are some things you can't get around, like the county's finance system. We have to be able to pay bills, so I had to spend time focusing on getting that system up and running and all, all functioning. That one's going to drop off here pretty quickly. Um, I think we're going into our second month with Civic Soul as our accounting firm, and so that'll be much more turnkey. Uh, project management is next on my list, meaning, okay, so the board says to do something, let's make sure if we've hired somebody to do something, they're doing what we said they, they, they're supposed to be doing. So, I called out Padre for the environmental contract and Civic Soul for the, uh, accounting contract. The next thing on my list currently is our annual financial audit. We are legally required to do an audit every year. Um, there's a couple of things going on with that. I'll just share them now. So, um, I think I've mentioned this before, but I'll, uh, uh, I'll say it again here for, for the minutes and everything else. Um, Mossley, hard time, in particular Alex Home from MLH, who's been our accountant, uh, and auditor for the last six years. Um, nothing I or Council could find says that, that we necessarily have to ship from them, but I will tell you, it's by far the best practice and it is required by other agencies. Um, good news is Alex Home is retired, so we can't go back to him as our auditor anyway. Um, in my mind, there's kind of, I, I have had an RFP out there. I, I reached out to over a dozen firms. A number of them responded, but either we're too busy or you're too small. We're not interested in responding. Um, I have had response from, uh, Mossley, hard time, a different auditor, who might be a good way to go, particularly since our audit is, our budget's so simple. I mean, it's incredibly simple. Um, I've also had a response from, um, the firm that supports, uh, San Diego CSD. Those are the only two responses I've had in, in three weeks of, of outreach. Um, they may be the only two I get. So, I'll be moving forward and bringing something to your board next, next month. Um, generally speaking, the audit is just an engagement letter. It's not a typical contract. Uh, next up on my list of things I work is Finance Committee Subcommittee, just because that's, that's the one that's been around. And for a long time, it was the only committee that met regularly. Um, it was the, the first, uh, thing that was closest to a standing committee that, that the district ever had. Uh, I will say that in my mind, currently, the value of that one is waning. Um, we've had a number of meetings that, for one reason or another, Finance Subcommittee didn't meet. And the, the current directors that are assigned said, yeah, I would have recommended those. Um, but I spend a lot of time just, you know, you got to get over there, you got to set up the meeting, you got to dig it down, you got to reserve the room. You know, it just takes time to do all that. Um, so the value of that one, I think, is waning a little bit. I'm not saying it's not important. I'm just saying the value currently with all the other things we're trying to get done is waning, but that's where I put it, about number eight. Then we, we jumped into a couple of different projects. Um, the 90% Design RFP, working with the Tech Subcommittee, that's the last couple of months, been a lot of work. Um, the Ad-Hoc Subcommittee, we've been working on polling consultants. We've also been working on communications consultants. Um, not had a whole lot of conversation, you'll see it further down, number 14, about the Assessment Engineer that we talked about earlier, which is the legally required piece of that project, right? Instead, we're still talking about some of these other pieces. Um, number 11 there, um, I do a quarterly newsletter. I've got the current quarters coming to a close at the end of the month. I've got it, the first draft of it done. Our agreement with LAFCO and our direction from LAFCO when we got, um, another two years was we have to report to them quarterly. So, I see that as a legal mandate, that we have to respond to them. I try and keep the work to a minimum, but it takes time, right? Um, last time, I, I would invite anybody to sit down and write a newsletter. It takes time to do that sort of stuff, unfortunately. Uh, I talked about, uh, the polling consultant with the ad hoc. Below LAFCO for me currently is the Communications Consultant. And then we've got some other project stuff, like the groundwater testing, like the Assessment Engineer RFP that I haven't started, like the contract with the city of solving that I haven't started. Um, the Grant Subcommittee, I know is anxious to meet because there's a lot to be talked about there. I haven't spent any time focused on them. Um, in particular, the Grant Subcommittee has talked, and, and this group has talked about, yeah, we need to have a meeting with all these potential funding partners. Um, I haven't spent five minutes thinking about it because it's so far down the list. Um, Project Sub, Project Management Subcommittee, who helps me both with, uh, kind of the long-term, medium-term project plan, as well as some other things, hasn't met. Uh, and it's not something I've been pushing to agendize because, again, it just takes up time and, and so on. And then last, but certainly not least, uh, social media. So, those are all the things on the plate. I would, I would also just kind of throw out there, when I talk about those first five, they're kind of the day-to-day stuff. Um, of the 30 hours, that tends to take between 10 and 15 hours. So, takes up about, in a month, about half my time, just eating the, the day-to-day stuff. Um, so, with that, I'm happy to respond to questions. What I'm looking for from your board this evening is just, you know, again, if you have, hey, Guy, drop that thing, don't do that. Or, you know, hey, you know, I could do that one. I'll, I'll pick that one up. You don't have to worry about it. I'll take it from here. Um, that sort of discussion. I would just, uh, on that latter approach where a board member says, hey, I can do that one, um, just be careful because there are times when a board member says, yeah, you know, I'll, I'll schedule a meeting. And then it's like, oh, great, great, the meeting schedule. Oh, but before we can have the meeting, I need all this work done, right? And so, unless the board member is willing to do that work as well, you know, that's, that's a struggle. Um, and then last but certainly not least, you know, the, the interesting thing about RFPs, and we've mentioned this before, um, is normal organizations that had full-time staff, um, that would all be done by staff. Um, and that's just the way the process is normally run. Because we don't have staff, your board ends up acting as staff in those meetings. Um, nothing wrong with that, let me be clear. But it, it just requires additional coordination because you've got to set up multiple meetings, um, so on and so forth. Got to explain to board members what the Mini Brooks Act is of 1990 and why it's important. Whereas staff, you know, we do this all the time, you know, we're used to, we understand why the Mini Brooks Act of 1990 is important. Um, and so, uh, just know that because of who we are, the size of our organization, um, this is, uh, taking on a, a, a level that I wish it didn't, meaning I have to bring it to your board just to make sure that we're, uh, that I'm focused in the right, in the right way. Um, if, if we were a large organization, I'd just be doing this internally and be done with it.
Well, I appreciate you, you know, laying this out for us. We've had this conversation about bringing it to the board so that we can get that feedback. Questions or comments from the board? Any public comments?
Yes.
Got one online.
Okay, hi, go ahead, Catherine.
Hi, um, I just, I wanted to note, um, it certainly does sound like, uh, General Manager Savage has a full plate. For the last couple of years, Anna Gott has been coming to these meetings and urging the board to get community members involved on a volunteer basis so that they could help bear some of this load and also help expedite some of the board's work. Those suggestions have been resoundingly ignored. Maybe tonight is the night to rethink engaging your community members to help with some of these things. To that end, if you had your committee meetings on the evenings and, or weekends, when people from the community can actually attend, um, I will be happy to handle the room scheduling. I'll bring the laptop and set it up, fire up the Zoom, upload the recording after every last one of those committee meetings. So, and I'm sure you've got other members of the community who would also be willing to help. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Catherine, I'm sorry, I misread the agenda, didn't realize that I can make a comment during, um, the General Manager's, uh, time. I, you know, would actually love to help. Um, I can help if we, if you have some of these committee, uh, meetings at different times or on the weekends. I think that in the past, as Catherine just said, I urge you guys to actually have your committee meetings on, um, and, and community meetings on the weekends because more people will be able to attend. Think about who on this property here in Santa Barbara, uh, to me in Los Lejos, sorry, I have a wrong town. Uh, in Los Lejos, um, a lot of parents who have kids in our elementary and high school, you know, do. We have older adults also who, who do. And some of our older adults don't like to drive at night. Some of our parents are busy at home trying to feed their kids or help them homework. So, if we could actually schedule meetings that are more conducive for these people to actually come to them, I think we'd have greater participation. And I think that, you know, that is just going to be something, you know, fast-forward for Los Lejos moving forward, especially when you guys think they got the prop funds to waste these votes uh, sometime next year or a year after. So, you know, I would be willing to help and, you know, I'm sure that there's some other people, um, that would be able to help with some of these things too, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks. Anyone else?
No.
I have a question for Council on how, on how we, how you engage volunteers in district business. When are we allowed to do that?
It, it is a somewhat complex, um, issue, not as simple as, um, as just allowing members of the public to, to participate in, in basically functions and activities of, of the district. Uh, there is a way of establishing a board policy or district policy for the use of volunteers for certain, uh, tasks and projects and, uh, which would, uh, allow, um, coverage, uh, for workers' comp issues, uh, as well as some potential, uh, liability coverage, um, by, uh, you know, the insurers, um, of the district. Because, um, you know, allowing people to perform functions usually performed by staff who are covered by both, either workers' comp or contractually covered by, by insurance, um, creates issues. If, if, um, one of the volunteers, um, arrives at, at, uh, at a location where the board, where the committee meeting is held and, uh, they're there with some equipment or they're there to set up or break down and they happen to hit somebody, they ordain themselves, trip and fall and get hurt. All of those issues come up when you have to consider about, uh, allowing them to do it. Or if they do something that they shouldn't do, either, you know, by accident, uh, through just lack of knowledge or on purpose. Uh, you know, there, there, there needs to be some level of accountability and control, uh, that is establishing that policy rather than just, you know, winging it, uh, as, as we go along. So, if, if the board would like to consider, uh, having a volunteer program for some specified tasks, which potentially, um, allow the General Manager to, to spend, um, uh, his hours on, on something that is more pertinent, um, to his role, um, we could, um, put something together, potentially for a board discussion, um, for the next meeting or meeting after that, uh, because it would take some, you know, we, I, I would need to do some, some digging as far as the insurance policies and all, all the things that are pertinent to that, that the district has in place right now, before we, you know, could come to you and, um, you know, have a knowledgeable discussion or be able to answer your questions fully on, on this issue. But we probably can put it together within 30 days and if not, certainly by, by the following meeting.
Okay, thank you. I just, I don't know if we're ready to add that to the list of things to do. But I'm just curious more as to what are the implications?
I was wondering, is it first, I mean, if, you know, we have used M&amp;S to, to, um, they have a variety of, of staff that we have a contract with and addresses all the issues that Council, uh, brought. And is there the ability on, of course, you were talking about taking something off the system, just blatantly, this could be.
Right, right.
Well, maybe it's a discussion I'd be happy to have with Mr. Pike, you know, what are, um, some of these, um, activities could, you know, they don't need Mr. Pike to do. Um, they could be done by, um, you know, staff that M&amp;S have that would cost less. But I would, I would think that these, these, um, a lot of these, uh, activities have legal implications. They have to be done right. They can't. Um, I, I, I think we, we need to have, um, somebody that, either an M&amp;S or, or something that will, that can do that. Unless I could probably come up with five or six, we could give to Director Parks to have it. I, I think we should look at doing that and eliminate it. I think, I think the, the point of the Finance Committee, um, is well put. I, I'd almost rely on some of the time it takes Mr. Savage to notice and do everything. And the Finance Committee, if he just looks at it and comes with a, with a recommendation, and maybe that's a job of the president too, um, just to look at, and we've done that several times now. Um, there's, there's one that seems like it could, could drop off.
Yeah, or go quarterly or as needed. I mean, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, there are things, when we get to budget time and audit, we need that committed. So, that can definitely, anything else?
I think we probably have a, we, we could pull from your talented tool of the public. Um, and somehow, um, probably wouldn't hurt to at least explore how hard it would be with the liability and the workers' comp and that such. So, I just think going forward, as far as especially grants, I mean, I think there's some people out there in the general public, we can probably really look into that, at least maybe have to. If nothing else, has recommendations for us, is, it's probably a lot of legwork in the grant world. Um, the word just not probably going to, even the Grant Subs Committee is not going to have time to explore all those avenues. And I'm sure it's, it's going to be difficult. Though I, I think it might not be a bad idea to at least have Council explore how difficult it would be to have, members of the public to be able to volunteer. We can address that in the future, but.
Director Nelson?
Yeah, um, one of the things that always comes into play, and I've had volunteers and worked as a volunteer and done a lot of that stuff, always need a lot of training that goes in upfront. And it's going to be done probably by the General Manager, which is going to add more work to his plate. Uh, I, I, I just, I, I'm not, I'd have to give this a whole lot more thought on that as to which would be the most efficient. It's, I, I, I think there are air. It's, I, I, I think there are areas that if somehow. Something that's pretty time consuming like the newsletter. If the information's there, it's provided and someone can put together a newsletter, it's just formatting it. Uh, if you've already got the data, um, I don't know if there's someone that would, you know, if that would fit into something or not. I'd need to look at those a whole lot more myself. Uh, because a, as the general manager said, sometimes those things come up and it's feast or famine. There's a whole lot of work to do and then there's a lot less to do in, in that particular area. It's, I don't know. I, I, with, with the finance committee, I tend to agree. If anybody's got, I mean, would usually when you look at the, all of that stuff, it's pretty much, it, it happens. It's a routine. There's nothing new most of the time. Um, and if the president were to look it over or pick somebody else as a, as a. Uh, treasurer or another director that would look it over with the general manager and. Or have it emailed to them and they send it back and say, I don't see any question here. I, I, I don't know. It's, it's with all the Brown Act. Requirements and meeting requirements and everything else, there's, it limits a lot of what we can and can't do. So, um. I hate, at this point, again, I'll say it for the third time, I'd need to look it over and, and understand from, uh. The general manager, Mr. Savage, as to how much time and what things does he think he could. Put off to somebody else to do that wouldn't be something he's got to still supervise. So that's kind of my thought.
Thank you. So I'm looking at this and you've got your ongoing day-to-day thing, as you mentioned, which is about a third of your time. And the rest of these are all project based. They're not ongoing activities. Is that fair? So, so it's really prioritizing the, how you, how you approach these projects. So.
Yeah, unless you can eliminate something, right? If you said, yeah, we're not going to do finance committee, we're not going to do groundwater testing, we're not going to.
That was going to go to groundwater testing. Can we just defer that or can we, why not? Are we obligated to do it? Why not defer it while we're getting all this other work that's relevant to getting a project approved? So, and I, I think that should be on the table. I agree on finance. I mean. Communications consultant, I'd move down the list because that, the way we're going is going to be next year sometime. If, if you agree or disagree, tell me. So that moves three down or take, moves two down and takes one off the list. We've got to move forward with the, the 90% design contract, the pulling to the trail. I think we're close on that. Last go, we've just got to build that in on a quarterly basis. The assessment, so I really think it comes down to how much time, you know, the assessment engineer and get moving forward. With grants. Work for how we're going to, coming up with the strategy for how we're going to identify funding.
Look, let me be clear about one thing and maybe I should have said it before, uh, you know, if, if this list is fine, the way it's, it's laid out, I'm fine with leaving it alone. I just. You know, I'm, I'm currently, I feel like I'm engaging back here for a lot of these to happen just because.
Right.
That, you know, we don't have staff to work this. And so, um, if you're okay with it. And there's a couple of things, you know, you want to pull the finance committee off except when there's an audit and we're doing the budget. Okay, let's do that. That'll save, you know. An hour a month and that's one thirtieth of my time, right? So it's not insignificant. Every hour that gets saved is, is significant in this, in this equation. So if you're fine with the stack of things, you want to couple, pull a couple of things off, great. If there's a couple that a board member says, well, you know, I can, I can take the lead on that, great as well. Um, I, I don't mean this to be a, a kind of a, you know, a drubbing by, by list of 19. I just want you to know that these are all things that we know we need to do.
Right. Where would you see opportunity for a board member to take the lead rather than you?
I don't know. I think you'd be great at writing a contract dissolving. No, I don't know. Um, it, it's going to come down to, you know, uh, if a board member has skill and an interest and the time, right? Let's be clear, uh, to, to take a, I'll call it a project like that, um, from, from beginning to end. That's one of the struggles, right? Some of these things are, are multiple weeks over multiple months to get them done. And so you can't, well, I'll take the contract dissolving. Okay, I did the first graph. Now you can carry it from here. Well, you know, doesn't quite work that way. So.
And also there are, there are some prohibitions related to having the directors. Be the employees of the district or act as employees of the district. So we need to be careful with that as well.
Understood. I'm just, yeah, understood.
We're following what you were saying, President. I think the finance committee, we've proven that we were able to do without.
Right.
And, um, on the, uh, the groundwater. Um, I, I'm just taking it upon myself just to ask, um, Mr. Pike. You know, how would he, if he were, if M and S, which we already have a contract for it, what, what would he see? I mean, they have. They have principal engineers all the way down to admin assistants and technicians and is there, uh, somebody that could handle that, uh, for us? Maybe even cheaper than, than, uh, uh, Mr. Savage. And it's certainly not overly technical and it's one of those things that almost seems like. Something I'd rather you not work, not that we don't do it, but someone other than you maybe, maybe do that. So I'm going to. Take that upon myself to contact Mr. Pike and see if there's options. Though, those seems to me as two, uh, fairly easy ones to. Take off. I guess maybe the only, the other question is, um. Is, is there a consultant that could use some, uh, with the social media? Again, would that be done cheaper than, than, um, Mr. Savage's time?
We should have an estimate from, uh, one term, um, it is on the order of. Say, five years.
Yeah, it's like how.
Yeah, we don't have a fun with the.
I'm not thinking that right, right now. Maybe when we're in the public iteration. Over, you know, 218 days, but not now.
All right. So if I could, sorry, I'm going to interject here just to kind of keep things moving. I, I, I've heard a couple of things, um, that, that I'll, I'll take action on. Um, based on, you know, kind of general direction to staff, meaning, you know, unless there's something like a budget or an audit. That the finance subcommittee needs to review in detail and have the sub-conversation about, I won't hold those meetings. Um, uh, you're going to talk to just me and Pike. I've got a follow-up call with him tomorrow anyway, just based on the meeting. Um, I'll mention it to him then. That's a, that's a 30 second, you know, um, that's a great one that I think that, to, to push out. Um, I heard your comments earlier, Director Palmer, about, you know, probably move the communication consultant down in the stack. And that'll allow me to move grants and the, um, assessment engineer up the stack a little bit. I also heard Director, uh, Farron's comment about, earlier about, you know, maybe we have an assessment engineer tend to have people subcommittee. And we could do that sort of stuff. That, that, um, that is fairly straightforward. It's, you know. Sure. So I don't want to labor this item unless there's more, you know, I think I've got enough direction at this point.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um, thank you for bringing that. Okay. Item 11, consider discontinuing the ESSA for committee, subcommittee meetings.
Yeah, so, um, uh, this is one we talked about last month. Um, your board and council suggested it be agendized for kind of official action. Um, so that's what this is on here for. Uh, how long was it, Director Barron, this evening?
Twenty-five minutes.
Just, uh, uh, you know, this is the problem with, we don't have a facility, right? And so hauling this equipment around took me nearly a half an hour because things go wrong with equipment. And, you know, that requires me to get there and then tear it all down and so forth. Luckily at this meeting I had help. Um, but, you know, it does take time and, uh, much like the hour not doing a finance committee, you know. Each meeting is a half hour to 45 minutes to do zoom for what are ultimately, um, advisory to this board. I'm not suggesting we stop zoom at this meeting, just the subcommittees, um, because just a time consumer. And I think when you think about best and highest sheets to my time, I'm not sure that that is it because all they make recommendations to the sport, this board decides. So that's why this is here.
Okay. Thank you. Any public comment?
Yeah, Murray.
Um, so board members, I'm just here to say one thing really loud and clear, and that is Los Feliz just simply can't afford to lose zoom access to our meetings. Many of us, um, you know, Zoom is really not an option. Um, it's the only way that people can stay informed. Parents are busy with kids, workers, um, are on the job, business owners are serving customers. If Zoom disappears, so does our ability to participate. And when participation is cut off, so is democracy. The timing of this makes it even more troubling. Over the next year, these committee discussions will directly shape Prop 218 vote. The single most expensive and consequential decision that this community has ever faced. Cutting off access right now does not, it just inconvenience people. It shuts them out of the process. We've been told that it's too hard to keep this Zoom in running, but let's be honest, opening up a laptop, hooking up some audio speakers, pressing record. Is not a technical challenge and scheduling meetings back to back, back to back does not require a prevalent effort. It's a choice and the real question is, why would our board choose less transparency when the community is asking for more and expects more? Let me also remind you that many of our agency's items are scheduled up as our regular, um, board meeting as. Items that no public comment will be received. So think about that. If you cannot make a public comment because you're at work during a technical meeting, how are you supposed to be able to participate in government? Especially when there are no PowerPoint presentations that are available online, you know, the weekend before. And all you've got is the blue tiny agenda. You can't participate. It doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. And this is really not something that should be, um, we should be talking about. And if it adds an hour a week, that's really not a whole lot of time. It really isn't. Um, and, you know, and taking away Zoom sends really the wrong message. It says that only a select few people are going to get to know what's happening while the rest of us are left in the dark. And that erodes trust, that silences voices and it's really not the Los Feliz that we believe in. You know, if you want to instill trust, if you want to, um, promote fairness and you, you want a community that stands behind its leaders. Then keep them, keep transparency and keep your promise to the people that you serve. You know, I created a small change.org petition and just a few days, we received 31 people that actually wanted you guys to keep Zoom. And I really think that you guys really need to be participating, be listening to are the people that are going to be voting. And Prop 218 vote and to these people that signed the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Good job.
Thank you. Um, I just think the timing of canceling municipal committee meetings is just, it, it's, it's wrong. Um, I attended the technical committee meeting and you keep calling it a subcommittee meeting, general manager, but. It's not a subcommittee meeting. It's a standing committee and that's the Brown Act. Uh, that's, you know, overseen by the Brown Act. So these are, these are meetings that are public meetings and I learned so much from listening to the presentations by one of those engineers. And that discussion was very robust and I appreciate the time that the technical committee gave to those, those board presentations. It took all day. It was at four, at 11 o'clock in the morning on a Monday. Now, if that was recorded and I don't know why Director Farron, we asked twice, remember to hit the report button if you would know it. And I think he's acting alone and not at the, um, and he's not acting like the board member. He acted by himself without the board's, board's discretion. They were supposed to give that, make that decision tonight, but he made the decision at that last committee meeting. Um, excuse me, Dr. Mr. Farron, it's not your turn to speak. Um, so I believe that, that this is not the time to cancel Zoom. Let's, if, this is, this, we're the 20th century. We can, we can do this. This is, technology has changed. And, and to stop now is sending the wrong message to the community. Thank you.
Uh, comments from the board.
Well, I mean, I think we listen to the public and they're. Very strong opinions on not doing it, not just continuing or so. Um, and we have a practitioner as well. And we should at least, um, I mean, I'm in meetings, so I think it's, it's, you know, but I know people and I don't know, I guess, I just don't know how many people really access Zoom. Um, but yeah, I mean, I do agree that transparency is always the best way to go. Then people don't think that you're hiding behind anything, um, and trying to have alter your motives and. And, and yeah, so maybe we can get a member of the public just to. Be responsible for it. And then, I don't know. Guys spending less time.
Okay. Director Nelson?
Yes, um, I, I understand both sides. Um, I think with our last, uh, discussion, we even are not having as many of the meetings. As we had expected to have. Um, I think. I have not seen that many people attend to those committee meetings, uh, by Zoom. There've been maybe one or two and, uh, usually there's one or two that come in physically to. Uh, observe the meeting and participate, but I think it's, it's a valuable enough tool. Uh, that I think there's more positive to keeping it than the negative of not keeping it. And that's all I got.
Well, just on the, the last technical subcommittee meeting, it wasn't adjourned, uh, wasn't noticed to be on Zoom. And there is a reason for that. Um, we were interviewing technical consultants and it's not a fair process to. Have one consultant come up and give their, their presentation, talk about things and, and have another consultant be able to hear that. And then it's not, it's not the way, it's not the way you do it. And, uh, it should have been an anhok actually is what it should have been for the, for this one piece of work. And that's what, that's what happened. I mean, I, I, um, I think it's been mentioned, the, uh, the Zoom attendance has been very light at those committees. And I've been to these committees and watched Mr. Savage, um, struggle at times with the, with the IT part again. We just heard an item about his time and so if the board wants to, or will the board is to continue with Zoom, that's fine. Um, well, we have, uh, you know, a limited amount of time of Mr. Savage, so. I'd, I'd be willing to consider maybe moving the, uh. Some of the meetings to maybe a six o'clock timeframe like this, but maybe, maybe that's an answer. Um, I'm not sure weekends is the answer. Um, I can imagine some of, uh, people say, well, wait a minute, that's. That's when I go do whatever my thing is. So. I don't know how Mr. Savage feels about meetings for, for the subcommittee meetings, but that would be an alternative.
I don't have a strong feeling on whether, I will remind the board that, uh, we did do a survey, uh, in 24, I think it was. And the public was pretty clear. They didn't want meetings on weekends. They wanted them during the week. You could redo that survey as well. That was, that was the response we got.
Um, well, I'm thinking if we're, if we're dropping finance. And the other three committees in the technical committee we've had. in the Technical Committee, we've had a lot.
Yeah, we had the one, we had, we had the one big one. The one big one, and before that, it's been a couple.
Okay. I'm inclined to not just continue it at this point. So, I appreciate the General Manager looking for ways to save time because I am conflicted because we've got him, we've got one staff, the General Manager. It's trying to maximize the utility of his time that he's spending at the same time trying to balance both the real and perceived transparency and public access. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Don't just continue the Zoom.
There is no motion necessary if the Board does not wish to make a change in the status.
Got it. So, does anyone want to make a motion to?
Nope.
Okay, so that one. Guys, thank you for the time bringing that. Okay, moving on to the financial items for parts from Subcommittee. No Finance, we're already established that. We have not had a grant Subcommittee for Project Management since last month. Do you want to talk about the ad hoc here?
Are you talking about Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, there wasn't a meeting because we couldn't hold it because I was not available.
Right, right. Okay. Do you want to talk about the 218 ad hoc here under Director comments?
Where do you like?
Okay, so, the ad hoc on the 218, which is Director Kennedy and myself and with the General Manager, we've been meeting to interview the polling candidates for the 218 process. We interviewed four. We interviewed the last ones today. We do have a recommendation that we retain True North to do the bias independent polling on the project when we get there. The reason we are looking to make a decision now is joining to the elections next year. We want to make sure we get somebody. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. I didn't bring any water. We need to, we wanted, the reason we're looking to make a decision now or get somebody who retained, or at least identified, is with the 2026 midterms next year. We wanted to make sure we identified, excuse me, somebody this year. So, it'd be the recommendation of the Subcommittee that we direct the General Manager to negotiate a contract with True North. So, is that, and then we just, when, does the Board need to act on that?
Well, the Board can't act on it right now. It's a report.
I'm not, not. Bring a contract next time. So, that's my report up there. Sorry. All right. Anything else on Subcommittee, otherwise we'll move to General Manager and District Engineer comments.
No more comments on this. Okay, so, just real quick. So, I do anticipate some sort of an RFP contract for, as you just described, the polling firm as well as an engineering consultant on the October agenda. Don't think we're going to get to Communications or Assessment Engineering contracts, but certainly I'll put on the agenda for next month again. More discussion about Assessment. I don't know, there'd be a whole lot to discuss next month. It's kind of petered out at the end of this month, or this evening. But I'll keep it on the agenda in case something new comes up. Moving toward the end of this calendar year, you know, I'm already beginning to think about the State of the District presentation, just because that's the one opportunity that we have to educate people that need to get caught up because they haven't paid attention for the whole year. So, I expect to do that as well. I do have a couple of things real quick via the same slide deck that I'd like to walk through. Just to make sure you're probably on the same page.
Just trying to keep work out with the General Manager.
So, this is a view of the Project Status Report that I included in the agenda. It's been updated slightly just because I've been busy since I posted the agenda. So, just a reminder, the Finance System went live August 6th. The contract was initially sold. Seems to be working well. We've set up how we're going to handle getting billing going, all that sort of stuff. I mentioned the audit firm. I do expect to bring a contract or an engagement letter for a new audit firm next month. And I'm not sure if it'll be the group descending as uses or continued with MLH. I will say that if we do continue with MLH, I would strongly suggest that we hire a new firm when we get to actual construction. Again, we've got what I would suggest, probably the easiest budget I've ever seen. You know, our household budgets tend to be more complex than our district budget. So, the audit is extremely simple. Doesn't mean we shouldn't make sure we're getting good, clean audits from a fresh set of eyes, and a new auditor from MLH could do that for us. We talked about the polling consultant. We have four. We've narrowed it to one. When I put this together, we hadn't quite narrowed it. I think we've narrowed it one to one based on today's earlier conversation. The Outreach Consultant still going to be discussing that. I don't think we're going to get to a contract, you know, in October, just there's not enough time, I don't think, to pull that one together with everything else. I'll talk to District Engineer Pike, since I have to talk to him anyway. And if I don't, Director Farron will talk to him about groundwater testing because that's coming around again every six months by clockwork. And then, I just wanted to note that there are a number of great consultants out there, Assessment Engineering firms and financial consultants. And I've spoken to at least one of each of those folks in the last week, 10 days. President Kennedy's been with me in all of those conversations, or at least part of the conversation. And really, these are just conversations to make sure that the tasks that we're lining up for ourselves are the right tasks in the right order and that we're not missing anything as we proceed through the design for the Prop 218. You know, it all falls under the ad hoc, and it just, you know, it's preliminary conversations. But I think just having those is perfectly fine. At some point, we're going to want to get to RFPs on most of these, which is not there yet. Then, just by way of, you know, here's the first snapshot I was able to pull from the new County Financial System shows that we have a little over $450,000 in our account. So, that's where, when we were talking earlier about the Design Engineering Contract, it fits well within that budget. So, just wanted to share that. There, the reports do look different. If you had a chance before we canceled the meeting to look at the detailed reports that I have been providing to the Finance Subcommittee, but the data is the same. Just a different form of report because of different system formats, right? So, there you have it. That's, I think, my report. Unless you have questions.
Questions from the Board? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Guy. We'll move to Director comments. Any comments that we haven't already shared?
Well, it's good enough. I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, let's see. Okay, I'm on. I just want to say the microphone has worked quite well tonight. I've been able to hear everything from the Directors and the people in the audience. So, congratulations. It worked pretty good tonight. So, that's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you. Okay, I have nothing. So, based on that, I will put out a motion to adjourn.
We adjourned at 8:30.
Thank you. All right. We still want to talk.
Just go ahead. Look, Farron?
Yeah.
Parks?
Yes.
Farron? Parks?
Hi, Nelson?
Yes.
Hi. Sure. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.